I'd like to call our meeting, I tell orders, our August 12th meeting tonight. We have Pastor Elliott with us, she's gonna lead us in the invocation. If everyone please stand up, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council and members of the city staff. I'm grateful to be here and appreciate the citizens who are here and who are listening. Let us bow our heads and hearts together. God of all people and places, God of all nations and races, we call upon you now to be with us during this time. It is important to note the history and the heritage of this city and to know that we stand on shoulders that some of us don't even know, but that we know they are great shoulders and that we have a legacy to continue forward in Lowell. Oh God, we ask that you would be with those who are in the meeting this evening to discuss and deliberate, to make decisions. We ask that you would always be with our mayor and city council and our city staff and all the workers that keep Lowell going every day. We're grateful for the citizens of this community as well and we ask that you would help us to always remember those among us who are the most challenged, that even as we deliberate on city business at this hour, there are people who go hungry and homeless and hurting right here in our midst. We pray, oh Lord, that you would be with each one of us in all of the things that are going on in our lives and that you would most importantly be with those this evening who will be making decisions and discernments, that you will help us always to do your will in the interest of the people. We pray all these things in the name of the One who comes and all God's children assembled said together, amen.
Thank you. How's the Federalism now?
How Federalism? To look at the flag, to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one one nation, unundergod, and indivisible, with every duty and justice of all.
Okay, anyone have, anyone wishes to speak, come up to the podium, just state your name and address if you'd like to speak tonight. If any public comments, we'll continue to go on. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda for this meeting.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, then we need to approve the minutes of January 31st, 2025, about eight months ago, so I guess we need a motion to approve that.
Make a motion, we approve the January 31st, 2025 budget retreat minutes.
Have a second. Second, Bonham, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Then we have additional.
Second, Chilwood.
I second.
Second, Chilwood.
I'm sorry, I'm Mr. Bonham.
First, I second.
Bates made the motion, Chilwood's second, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
All right, all as unanimous, the next thing on the agenda, approval of the minutes of January 31st for the wastewater treatment discussion minutes on January 31st, 2025.
Make a motion, we approve the January 31st, 2025 wastewater treatment discussion minutes.
Have a second.
Second.
Mr. Bates, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Approval of the minutes from July 8th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the July 8th, 2025 minutes.
Have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bates, no discussion, all in favor? I'm sorry.
I was absent at that meeting, so I was abstaining, abstaining from voting.
Same for me.
Okay, so we got two of them that's gonna not be voting, so all in favor? Three of you did and the other two abstaining, that's good. Still council, yes vote, that's all right. Special presentation by Councilman Smith, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Seems we have a little baseball player in Lowell, Grant Ushry, went to a four-day camp at Clemson University and Grant won the Tiger Award. This athlete exemplifies everything a Clemson Tiger should be, not only in their athleticism, but in their sportsmanship and encouragement across their teammates and coaches. He was chosen for this award out of all the eight-year-olds present at the camp and it was just over 100 kids in his age group, so I think we owe him a congratulations for that big achievement.
That's just standing, let him give it a little bit. Let Cheryl take a picture with him.
Hey Grant, University of South Carolina, would love to have you.
He looks like a Tar Heel maybe. Come on up here, Grant, let him take a picture of you. If you don't mind taking a picture and put it into our maintenance topic, you know, go out and shake his hand.
Congratulations, Grant, Graham, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job, proud of you. Thank you.
Good job, Cheryl.
All right, see, the next item's gonna be consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Have a second.
Second.
Bates made the motion, Chilwood's second, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, new unfinished business, new business.
Hold on just a second.
May I?
Unanimous. Thank you. The next item on the agenda of discussion regarding city property, I guess that's you, Tyler.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, we discussed the property, was what we caused, the church property on North Main Street. We were talking about possibly doing a city hall police station there. What this would allow for was a revitalization of downtown, which would serve as an economic driving point for our downtown, for our local businesses and potentially increase the foot traffic down here if we were to sell the crammed-in two buildings that we're in and move up there. The second property that we would like to discuss is the public works facility out of the old chemical plant. Relocating the public works department to the chemical plant property will provide adequate space for the fleet equipment and material storage. It will also support the operations efficiency with a built-upon area tailored to the department's needs and will also use the land that we have provided up there in a productive manner. My recommendation is that we, the city moves forward with this plan for the construction of the new city hall and police station in the downtown area, along with the development of new public works facility at the site formerly known as the chemical plant. I ask that the city council support the beginnings of the next phase of planning, including preliminary site assessment, cost evaluations, and identifying potential funding opportunities.
That sounds well and good, but here's the thing about it, when the city owns property, we don't, we don't get any tax money for it. We got that big piece of property up on top of the hill, the Big Mammoth, and bringing a lot of revenue for the citizens and as far as going out and, you know, us moving city hall from here to one block, that's, you know, that's kind of, that's expensive. And I understand you had other people approach you about the property up there as far as showing an interest in the Methodist property and it would be a good idea to put in, you know, for questions from the board and even the citizens, let them have an input as to what to do with our property. Anything we own, we get no revenue for it and if we owned everything in Lowell, we'd be, we'd be in bad shape. So we have to make, you know, concessions sometimes to move forward and let the city grow. It's up to the, and I would, I agree with you as far as, we can't do anything tonight, but when the new board gets elected, that'll be something for them to contend with and I think that's a better idea than just to table it, haul of it, rather than trying to borrow money or trying to start money.
I kind of disagree on the tabling this. I think if we're gonna do anything, we need to address it tonight and my thoughts is we've all been talking about doing the public works facility and getting that started. I would like to see that go ahead and get in the process of being done. And as far, and I'm not against a city hall slash police department, but I think at the present current time, there's really not a need for it, for us to go out and be spending the money, possibly having to raise taxes. I'm sure in the future, yes, we'll need one and I would like to see a new city hall. I'm not, I'm not opposed to a city hall at all, to a new, I just don't think right now's the right time to do it. And with all this development coming and, you know, some of the warehouses that are coming in, I think if maybe we can push, even looking at a city hall out that far and wait for all that additional revenue to start coming in, I think we've been in a better position financially to be looking at a new city hall place complex. That's just my thoughts.
I think tonight, we don't need a motion or anything, you're just looking for more guidance. I agree with Bates, I would much rather start a public works facility first, get that going, later on down the road, address city hall police.
And let me throw something else, I'm opposed to us selling the park, the church park. I think we need to keep that for the purpose of a city hall slash police department complex down the road in the future.
I think it needs to be noted too, in the sale agreement, it's civic use only, correct? So it's not like we go out and sell it, Joe Blow and he can open up whatever he wants to do down there, it has to be civic use. That said, I agree as well, develop the public works, but I don't think it's too early to start planning and getting your ducks in a row for city hall and police over there. I'm not saying dump half a million dollars in it right now, but let's start planning. If you're looking at what's going up around here, it's going up quick, it really is. So that day is not too far down the road. To think you're gonna be able to wait 10 years, I don't think's realistic. I think you want to be under construction in three to four, so I think now would be the time to start planning for that, realizing that you're gonna be digging, you know, three to four years down the road and nobody's digging tomorrow on either one of them, right? But we gotta start getting, getting our plans straight and what it is we want to do.
How much land do we have in the sewer plant? 15, 20 acres?
Maybe 10 to 12.
Something like that, but you got plenty enough room to build a public works facility there and go up here and sell that property at the chemical plant, you can get three and a half million dollars, that's three and a half million dollars you're gonna be collecting tax on, whatever they put on will be additional money. That would fund your public works building, but you gotta have common sense, you gotta look followed in the internet little knows and understand what it costs to run this place. If you can bring in that kind of revenue with that one deal up there and then build a public works down there and whatever, we still own this property and like you said, if we ever did move up there, whatever, and you could sell this property, bring in revenue, it'd be for business, that's good. But like it says now, both of these properties are bringing in not a dime. This property, nor the Methodist property bringing anything, it's a dead expense. But what should have never happened, the citizen, the city council should have never bought the property to start with. They spent the money, I mean, didn't spend the money, they paid the lawyer, attorney fees and all these agreements that y'all have that we don't even, we're not, I haven't seen no agreement. Have you seen any agreement that we have as far as what can be done with the property other than we take care of the property, which we should, it's our property. If you can bring in three and a half million dollars and pay for your public works department out of the way, why would you want a public works building up on top of Spencer Mountain, coming up and down the road, letting trash fly everywhere, when you could have it down there, the facility already on, which is the sewer plant? And it makes sense to save money, make money and do something without having to raise taxes.
Where would the trash be coming from there?
From us going up the hill. They gotta take it up there.
If you put it down at sewer plant, you're gonna have trash going through town that way. And from a security point of it, you put a public works building down at our sewer plant off in the woods, I guarantee within a month, somebody's gonna be broken into the building, stealing all kind of equipment and everything.
You got cameras.
That's gonna happen anywhere.
You got cameras, you got cameras.
And I agree.
Come on.
But off down in the woods versus over there where you got more traffic coming and going.
We patrol the woods. We patrol the woods.
I'm just saying, I ain't arguing with you, I'm just saying. I don't agree with putting it down.
We need to use our head.
Get my opinion here, is it okay to get my opinion here? Thank you. This was my opinion, I, first, when Tyler approached, they said that the person that we want, or the people that were wanting to buy that property, my thought process was a swap and whoever paid the difference, the property, that city property to the building that they were selling and then that's when I did some more digging with Tyler and found out it has to go through a bid process. It wasn't, it would not be done like the water tower was done because that's not economical development type deal from the way I understood it. So with that said, I don't want to sell it, I don't want somebody to come along and buy it and put whatever up there and with all the caveats on it. On, as far as city hall, eventually down the line, I would say the more lines of six, seven, eight years down the line, when we have all the housing developments built out, the warehouses built out, that's a lot more revenue coming in. And so on that, I think we need to go ahead and get started with public works.
I agree, I think we need to move forward with at least getting the cost and just kind of seeing where we stand, what impact it's gonna have.
On what?
As far as the public works. As far as the property at the church, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we were taking tax money in on that anyway because it's part of the church. So we never received tax money on that. Now, the upkeep part of it, yes, we are doing now. I think for future use, I mean, I agree with Scott, I say we definitely keep the property in. That is our ultimate goal.
Next step. What Mr. Chilwood was speaking about is a great thing because that property would be coming up, you know, it would be commercial, whatever, there'd be money revenue coming in, that would be a win-win situation, not only what would be going in of there besides the Methodist church.
What do you mean, what are you talking about? Explain yourself on that one.
I didn't understand.
You said exchange of property.
Yes, but, but if you can't exchange it, it has to go up, the sale of the property had to go up for bid.
That would be up to your attorney over here, I don't know what kind, I've never seen.
I've already did the digging on that one.
Have you seen the revenue?
I had, I had, I haven't called and it hasn't.
Is there any way that could be changed or anything that would create something like that, where we could swap it out or?
Well.
I'm just asking him, he's a legal guy.
Right, yeah, but I mean, if you need a motion, go ahead and make sure that the property stays here, I'd be glad to make that motion.
I think we've already got four.
You got four sitting here.
We're just having discussion.
I understand, but I mean.
No necessary.
Well, that way it cuts out all other discussions about the sale of property.
I'm just asking, I'm asking attorney for a legal opinion. Is there anything that you, that you've seen of what's, what's going on when, when the city obtained the property and agreements? And I can't, you know, simply say that the property in front of it is what would be swapping out and we'd have three cities, Belmont, Cameron's and Lowell would have the same property up there and then that property that they own now would be up for sale, which would bring in commercial property for the city.
I think what Mr. Chilwood was saying is swapping the property is the lodge would take the church property and build their new residential lodge.
I didn't like to say that, I'm sorry. I agree.
The lodge.
I agree.
And then the city would own the lodge building and possibly refurbish it into a city hall. He's not talking about swapping and then us turn around and selling the lodge.
Yeah, I didn't finish that part, that's what I meant, that turns into the city hall.
But like I said, if all the research that I done with Tyler and him contacting John,
it can't be done without a bid process. it can't be done without a bid process. And there's no telling who would win the bid. So that's why I vote no against.
How, how they do all those underhanding deals before, whenever they go up here and sell the property where the water tank was, without no, no public, nothing, y'all were, y'all were in the
Because there's a certain way that's called economic, what was that you called it, economical development?
I call it, I call it defecating citizens.
Listen up to what he said.
That's what I call it.
That way you hear what he said. What'd you say again?
I call it defecation of the citizen.
I'm not talking to you.
City is economic development.
And it doesn't have to be up for a bid?
Certain restrictions.
Certain restrictions.
Yes.
Right, for that property there, it's public here, and for the city to hold it for economic development.
And then once you can, to have or holding property for economic development, you can sell to an individual bidder. Otherwise, the city can't just pick and choose who their bidder is. They have to put it out through one of the statutorily approved methods for sale and selling property.
Not a real estate agent or nothing.
And by the way, listen, listen to the size of that property too, that we did that on. You couldn't put anything bigger than what's on it now, on it.
It goes, they bought it to add to the other property, which was worth a lot of money to them.
Exactly. But you couldn't, you couldn't buy that piece of dirt and put anything on it. It's just too small.
What do you mean?
It's too small.
It's a big piece of property. I think what you need to do though is stop and think about what we're doing when we have an opportunity to do something, to make the city better and grow it. We don't get no, whatever we own, we get no tax money for it, nothing. And you keep, you keep speaking about spending all these millions of dollars, guess who's gotta pay for it? You and the rest of us. If you can get three and a half million dollars of that piece of property up on the mountain, build you a public works building and have money coming in, that's a win-win situation. They don't care what you say. And also, and talking about the Masonic Lodge and things like that, how great would that be to have three cities sitting on that piece of property with the shrine over there with the Masonic Lodge? That would be tremendous. And whatever they, whatever we chose to do with the property, it would be up to the council if you swapped it out. I don't know how, I'm sure the attorney can, you can come up with something, you came up with that. Why can't you come up with something that would make sense for us? To swap that property out to where we could eventually have money coming in.
Again, I think we've already made the decision and it's time to move on.
I mean, you made the decision, but
Five of us made the decision.
People need to know what you're doing with their money. That's what I'm here for, to let people know this is their, the taxpayer's money is what we're spending and not taking nothing in.
I don't think we've, we've spent any money so far as far as dealing with this property.
Well, you pay attorney fees every month. You also, you got, you got a valuable piece of property up there. What would that bring in up there on the mountain, twenty some acres on the river? We could have boat ride, you know, you could have those slides like they have in the mountains, and you can have all kind of things. But you gotta open your eyes and do something. You can't just continue to live in the bubble. That's up to the council though.
Yeah, and we've already made the decision, so can we move on to six B, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. All right, next is gonna be a consideration budget amendment. Go ahead.
Mayor, Council, this first budget amendment number one is to move funds from power bill fund balance to pay for some repairs and paving, resurfacing the city streets. And I listed the city streets below that we're actually gonna be getting the resurfacing. And just need this budget amendment.
How much money are you talking about?
Hundred and seventy thousand on the budget amendment.
So you're just setting the budget to do it? You gonna take bids, Tyler? You gonna take bids, okay, good. So you're just appropriating the money that's already been appropriated, power bill money to start with? You, I don't understand, but you already have power bill money?
Yes, sir, but at the end of the fiscal year, the power bill money dumps into the fund balance. So in order to spend it, I have to move it from fund balance into the budget. So that's what this budget amendment is doing.
So what you're saying, you're taking the money out of the power bill fund and setting it aside into the general fund?
No, sir.
Why can't it just stay where it is until you need it and spend it?
It has to be moved into the budget in order to spend it.
By what month?
I'm sorry?
By what month you need to do that? I mean, why, why, as I already said, you're talking about spending a hundred and seventy thousand to pay these streets. But once you take the bid, you can still take the money out of the power bill money. I don't see why you need to move anything, but it's up to the council. I don't, I don't understand it. Do you understand?
We can settle. Approve the budget amendment number one for streets. I think it's a power bill money.
Where are you putting it? In discussion, where are you putting it? You're taking it out, but it's still in the bank, correct?
Yes.
Absolutely. Well, I don't understand why you need a budget amendment, you're not writing a check. The money's still there. Why do we need all these budget amendments every month?
The city works off of a budget.
Yes, ma'am, it's a total budget.
And before you can spend money, you have to have it in the budget.
Yes, ma'am, it's all there.
So the budget amendment that I am proposing is moving a hundred and seventy thousand dollars into the power bill budget from the fund balance from prior years in order to be able to spend it.
But you have a total power bill budget right now, ma'am.
Yes, the total power bill budget for this fiscal year was a hundred thousand before this budget amendment.
What's the total amount we have in power bill? Nine hundred and something thousand?
No, sir, and you should have the information that
I'm asking you, you're the finance officer, how much is it?
Sir, you got the information, I'm asking
How much is it? That's a question. The citizens need to know how much money you have in power bill, how much is it?
I think we've already had the discussion.
You have discussion on motions?
If you have a question to any staff member for a meeting, you give them a twenty-four to forty-eight hour notice.
How much money, there's no reason for this. The money's in the budget.
Mayor, don't you have it in front of you? Why don't you give that to the citizens?
I don't want to, it's not my job, she's finding something.
You're the mayor.
So what? I'm already stated, I've already made my statement, you got the money in the budget, you don't need a budget amendment.
Point of order, and move on.
Second point of order.
You have a motion.
Call for a vote for the point of order.
You have a motion and a second and a call for a vote, so you need to take a vote.
I'll take it.
Sir, you gonna call for a motion or you
Yes, I'm gonna call for the motion, Mr. Chittwood, I'm calling for the motion now, let's vote.
This is a very quick meeting and you're making this right now.
No, I'm not, you're over here moving money around, you shouldn't be moving. The public watching this, go ahead.
There's a blue border on the floor.
I said vote.
Okay, you've already had a
You got a motion, second. Any more discussion? No more discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. I'm opposed to it because you already got the money. I am opposed to it. I'm opposed to all these budget amendments.
But that's fine, when you become a council member and try to, try to, you can try to pass it.
Listen, this is not a political theater. This is, this is folks' money that you're spending.
And we understand that.
You wasting money doing this and doing that, wasting money for attorney fees.
And nobody is, we're being transparent about where the money's at, and it's
It's already there.
It's getting streets fixed, and matter of fact, it's one street
We don't have to sit here every meeting
I agree.
And tell the citizens.
And change and change the budget amendment every month. We don't, I agree with you a hundred percent, we shouldn't be doing that, you already have a budget.
I didn't say that we shouldn't do budget amendments. I'm just saying the information is available to the public.
You got that one passed, what's the next one?
No, we ain't, we need a motion, we need, I made the motion for the pass the agenda, or the budget amendment needed a second. Try a second.
Already been voted on.
No, it has not. You gotta call for the vote. Either that or
This is number two.
All in favor?
We ain't started number two, we started, we're still on one more. No, we have not.
All in favor? All opposed? Any unanimous, thank you. I wish Mr. Chittwood seconded my vote, I guess.
The first vote was for to call for the vote, point of order, to have the vote. The second vote Correct, the second vote was on passing a budget amendment number one.
But the money's still in the bank.
Yes.
And just for the record, the bank balance for the power bill is seven hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-six cents.
And that well covers a hundred and seventy thousand. That well covers a hundred and seventy. No reason for this crap, we do it every month. What's your next thing on the agenda? I guess it'll be the next consideration, budget amendment, another one. Number two, you can go ahead.
Yes, budget amendment number two is to receive insurance proceeds from interlocal risk financing fund of North Carolina for damages to the concession stand at Harold Rankin Park. The amount of the, the money that we received was two thousand four fifty-six and forty-two cent for those damages.
This is one, one vote to take the money and put it into the general fund?
No, sir, this is the vote to accept the revenue so we can add it to the budget.
To the general fund?
The parking maintenance.
Yes.
It's still part of the general fund, we don't have a line item budget, we have a total budget. You got a mo, you have a motion to accept this?
Motion to approve budget, place of order.
Second, have a second. Second.
Second.
In discussion?
Under discussion, what happened to the concession stand?
Somebody kicked the door in.
Okay.
Got a motion, second, any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed, unanimous, thank you. All right. And now we're gonna have a debate on the trash route, go ahead, Tyler.
We got one more budget amendment.
Oh, have, I'm sorry, excuse me. I'm in a hurry to get out of here now, y'all got me ready to go home. See, consideration, consideration of budget amendment number three, Cheryl, go ahead.
The next budget amendment, budget amendment number three is to transfer funds to the community investment fund as per the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget ordinance. And the amount was three hundred thousand dollars.
There again, this is all general fund money. Why do we need to, why do we call it SIF money when it's all general fund money?
It's community investment fund.
I understand, but it's still general fund money, taxpayers' money. I don't care if you call it George, it's still taxpayers' money. All of it. What's the total amount we have, Tyler, with SIF and general fund? And why do you need to move three hundred thousand?
Just for FYI, this was set in the budget that was just passed, that we would set three hundred thousand from the general fund.
That's right, but you have to vote on it, that's what you're doing now, you're voting on it. But it's still general fund money.
It is.
So we've already talked about it prior to this.
But it's still general fund money. There's no reason for it to switch it around, it's still taxpayers' money. You can call it SIF or George or Henry, it doesn't matter, it's still taxpayers' money.
I guess you're thinking about stuff from nineteen eighty the way they used to do it, this is
We're thinking about being transparent with your money, knowing how much money you have.
That's what the city was set up for, so it could be more transparent, so you could see exactly where the money was going. Does it follow under the auspices of the general fund? Absolutely, it does. But it's a separate line item where you're able to move money. And when we have a surplus, let's say, probably a bad word to use, in revenues over expenditures, anything greater than that goes automatically to SIF. We read on that many council meeting budget being passed. This is just a vehicle to house SIF money, to be used for a specific purpose.
But it's all general fund money. Total amount is general fund, I don't care if you call it
Motion to approve budget amendment number three, FY twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
But we never got the audit, so we could know where all the money went. We never got our audit. No one, the council wanted an audit, but they backed down, they ran away. So you got a motion and a second to move your own money, general fund money to SIF money, which still entails that it's all in the general fund. So you got a motion and a second stating that you got SIF for three hundred thousand, but you still, the total amount's the same. You got a motion, second, any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right. Now we can do the trash route.
So we're gonna, so effective September first, twenty twenty-five, the trash routes that are currently being served on Monday will move to the Tuesday. These routes will include one hundred to eight seventeen North Main, Hart Circle, one eighty-eight to two eleven West Third, Hemlock Lane, North Church, West Second, and Popular Street. Those, those current routes right now are being serviced on Monday. They will be moved to the Tuesday route. And we will make sure that we ensure all the residents that are gonna be affected along with the businesses of this change.
You just updated this on that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So you don't need a motion to change the route?
Nope.
So you're just gonna send out a letter to the citizens that that is gonna be changed?
We're gonna notify all the affected areas.
That's good, let them know ahead of time. All right.
Is that gonna happen this week?
Yes, yeah.
Approval of equipment financing, I'm interested in that.
So we sent out for an RFQ for financing for the equipment that was approved in the budget meeting of two hundred thousand dollars. That was going to be able to finance the equipment that we had purchased. It was three Dodge Durangos, a hydraulic breaker equipment, a sixty inch, sixty inch zero turn, an Aqua Tap, a sewer tap, two short fin form boards, and a backpack blower. We sent it out for thirty days, we did not receive any bids back. We sent it out a second time and received two. One was from United Financial, which is a division of Home Trust and First Horizon. My recommendation is to go with Home Trust with the rate of four point four six. With the rate of four point four six, and it should be paid every fifty-nine months.
And just to clarify, because it threw me off, Home Trust is Unified Financial.
Yeah, United Financial, yeah. United Financial, yeah, it's a division of Home Trust.
I didn't read the very fine print that day.
Yeah, and that's who, that's, that's who our equipment's financed through currently. And again, they gave us the best rate of four point six.
Okay, you have a, what do y'all, you want, you need a motion, is that what you need?
Yes.
Who's gonna, who's gonna be the brave one?
I make a motion that we accept this bid for Home Trust Bank.
Second.
Under discussion. How, I mean, listen, it's gotta stop. We gotta stop being like we are, we got plenty of money in the bank. Why in the hell would we be borrowing money at five point four percent when we got millions of dollars in the bank drawing interest? We don't need to be doing, I hope people are listening out there, how they manage money at this council table. That is the craziest thing I've ever heard in my life, when you can pay for it right now and not borrow any money. And pay all these origination fees and all the crap that you have to. That's not good budget, that's not a good, that's not good financial information for this town or for this board. But you got a motion and a second to borrow money from yourself.
Mayor, you don't have to get loud.
I am allowed.
I'm sitting beside you and you're gonna quieten there.
I'm not allowed. I can't hear as good as you can, but I wanna be, I wanna be heard.
You can be heard, but you're not gonna sit here and holler.
I'm not hollering. I'm here, you're spending money you shouldn't be spending. You got money.
When you get on the council, you can make those decisions.
The council, I'm on the board.
Because you're running for it.
I'm the mayor. You're wasting taxpayers' money. I'm not lying about nothing, I have a right to
You're not gonna sit here and holler at the ear just to be heard.
I'm not hollering your ear.
Yes, you are.
We have a motion, you're hollering, I'm not hollering. We have a motion and a second to pass this. Ludicrous deal, wrong. But go ahead, let the people know you're wasting money. You've got the money in the bank to pay for it. There's no reason for this guy, none whatsoever. You know better than I do too.
Mr. Robinson, when I said that was a good idea, you explained it a whole lot better of why it's not a good idea. If you can try to explain that to Mr. Simons, without him interrupting you, I would greatly appreciate it.
No, it's just that, I mean, you, once you've set your budget, you're gonna have to make up for the funds that either you wanna pay it all out of one budget and then you're gonna be in the minus for that year. If you continue to do that, then it's gonna be a problem. So you finance a lot of these things to spread it out over
And the interest that we're banking currently on
Here's the truth, here's the truth and nothing but the truth.
We've wrecked police cars out there, we had, we had, we had insurance money coming back.
We got money in the budget for all these departments, we have money in the bank, in the savings accounts, getting five percent interest, We have money in the bank, in the savings accounts, getting 5% interest, turning around and borrowing money and paying 5.4, paying all these origination fees. When we can strike one check, pay for these things, we'll be done with it. There's no... That's why you need people on this council that know the money.
You cannot continue to pay for these things, pay for these things, pay for these things.
You're paying for it in payments.
The interest off our payments.
The interest we're making off the bank is payments, yes.
You could pay it one swap of the check and not have not heard a thing and save money.
So the interest that we're earning at the bank is more than what this interest is for the finance?
Yes, the amounts that we have.
You're not getting no 5.5% at the bank?
Mr. Simons, I'm trying to get this answered, please.
The amounts of the balances that we have, the current interest that we're making is more in interest than what we're gonna be paying for a monthly payment for these.
If ever done, they defecate themselves, that's about anybody else. You don't take... You don't borrow money when you have the money. And you can't ever borrow yourself rich. I don't care who you are, what you think, you can't do it. When you got the money, that's why you set a tax rate to pay these things. And we have all this money in the bank. How much we got in the bank? $9 million total? And you wanna go out and borrow 200,000? Come on, people. Get together. You got a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Oh, I've got one now. I'm gonna be on the council. You said I...
Like I said, you were lying about doing that.
Listen, I ain't lying about nothing. I'm your mayor and I'm gonna be on the council. You can't get rid of me, the citizen love layer. Okay, city manager, report. Go ahead. Thank you. City attorney, you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, Shane?
I do not.
Scott?
I do. I'd like to address something with you, Mayor. It was brought to our attention that you went to an employee's residence after hours, business hours, to discuss city business. That's totally unacceptable. We shouldn't be approaching any of the employees at their houses to discuss business.
I don't know what you're speaking about, but I have had me in the conversation with everybody, including you and everyone else in this town. I mean, I don't know if you're an employee or elected official or neighbor or whatever. I don't see no reason that you can't discuss things with whomever and whenever. But that's okay if that's what you council members want.
Well, we said that. We made a motion not to do it and you still do it.
Well, I mean, I'm not a...
And this time you even went to the person's house. You went to his personal... His place of living, his house.
After being offered work.
It'd be better to go on the job and talk to them.
That's not...
No, it would be better to go to the city manager like you've been directed to do starting with.
Well, I've talked to the city manager several times.
Then that's where...
That's where you're supposed to go. And you stop with him.
That's where the information needs to be coming from.
So we don't need this city to waste money on anything. I don't care what time of day or night it is and I don't care if you get upset with me about that. I can't help it. I'm gonna speak up for these people that have no way of getting anyone to speak up for them. Like, people have complaints. I try to send them in the right direction all the time. I don't...
Right. I discussed with you in the parking lot about that. You directing people to me to handle complaints against the police officers. That is not my position as a council member or as a liaison of the police department. We have a chief, and that's why he is there for us, to handle the complaints.
What are you and Chitwood? Y'all not the liaison between...
I just told you I'm a liaison, but that is not my responsibility to handle the complaints on a police officer. It's up to the chief of police. And then if he cannot handle it, it goes to the city manager.
Absolutely. But you're the liaison between the people in the police department. That's what you're appointed to do.
He's the liaison between us and the police department.
He is. Not between the people and the police.
I talk to the police chief all the time. I'm not afraid to talk to you, both or anyone. I got... We got things to do. We gotta get it done. We got people out here driving through the long...
So what you're saying is you're going against the motion that was made against you and for all of us not to go speak to the employees and talking to the city manager. That's what the motion was made.
If I hurt anyone's field, I apologize for that, but...
I mean, you still do it. I mean, it's... You're Larry Simons. You're gonna do what you darn well please. But yet, your professionalism with the council is mud.
I wish y'all worked together. We may get something done.
We're not gonna work with you. I can see that coming.
I can promise you, these five right here work together.
That's good. This old six will work together too.
By itself.
Whatever has to be done. I'm not gonna run from it. I'm gonna take it on head on.
And I wanna address something else too, without getting too far into discussion about it. When you go out here and you accuse certain things, you better have the facts to back it up.
What am I accusing people of?
I told you I'm not gonna get into the discussion of it.
If I was gonna bring something up, I'd bring it all out. I wouldn't hide behind a bush. I'd just bring it out. What did I do?
Okay, you're accusing certain ones of stealing our water? Do you have facts?
Yes.
Do you?
Absolutely.
Why don't you bring it to the table and show us?
I've already talked with Tyler to about it. Down here at the schoolhouse.
So you got proof?
Listen, you got proof too.
I do?
Yes, sir. You're a city council member. You should know more. You're losing 4 million gallons a month.
I know we're losing. But where is it going?
That's right. We found part of it. Part of it's down at the sewer plant too.
Okay, you found part of it, but you're saying...
You found it over here at the water? No, you asked... You brought it up. I'm gonna answer your question. You asked me where...
I didn't ask you a question.
Well, you did.
I did not ask you a question other than do you have the proof?
Yes, I do. You have a meter down there.
Then why don't you bring the receipts and present it to the board?
Listen, they have ways out. They can't... They'll tell you, you don't even have a right to look at nothing. When Far Yarns goes... Listen, when we put that water line in down there, taxpayers, the county paid for it. They said they needed it for the fire... For the school. Biggest lies they were told. They're still using the water line that we had before, the agents line that they put in. But now Far Yarns has tapped onto it. Must be paying twice as much for water as we do. Schools must be paying twice as much for water.
Tyler, did they tap into it?
Yes, they did.
Well, hell in the world, there is not one piece of dirt moved from that meter to fall.
Just walk out behind your house and look.
I have seen it. I've seen it dead end right there.
You seen the water, Mayor? You seen the tap on top of the hill? Tyler, is there a tap on top of the hill for their water so they can use the water down there? Far Yarns can use that water right there at the top of the hill where that meter is, where that tying.
Now, the...
Yes, just drive down it right now and I'll show you.
The line runs from the back of Phil's house till the second part, the second drive in front of the school. And it stops right there.
You have a meter right there in front of the school, but you also have a tap at the top of the hill for Far Yarns to use the water. That end of the dam lies there. And we shouldn't be doing that. We got them off of there years ago so we could use our own sewer. Now they go in back doorways of trying to put in a sewer out there. Some kind of a... I don't know what they're doing out there. I don't know. But still, it's like the... Just when you go down Spencer Mountain Road, when they put all those water lines and sewer lines for those new development, all those expanses are theirs. But where are they gonna take it to? And how are they gonna get it there? And all this infrastructure, because you don't talk about until the houses are being built. You got traffic and traffic and schools and people going to school. But you go ahead and allow them to build all those houses down there with no infrastructure for it. And what the infrastructure gonna be? They're gonna pay for the water lines, sewer lines. But how many people are they gonna kill in the meantime trying to get to school? We don't think about nothing.
Is this still my time, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So I can have four back there? I'm done.
Thank you. All right. Anyway, so who else? You got anything? Mr. Smith?
I would just like to apologize for our neighbor ring municipalities to put up with the stuff we have to put up with dealing with you and your antics and to double back on your talk about the schools and roads. We all know there is no traffic studies and there are no school studies until there are commodes flushing in new houses. It is backwards. I agree 100%. But we all know that that's the way it works. It's the way it's always been. And they will come and do those traffic studies and school studies once the houses are built.
It's too late. We don't have the kids that don't have no right for school.
It's just the way it is. That's all. Thank you for our citizens coming out. And that's all I have.
Yeah, but the comment on what you just stated about the subdivisions out there and things like that, all this stuff should've been taken into consideration before you go out here and annex property and let them come in and be annexed. We can't go out and annex property anymore. They have to come to you. And that's what happened. You took them in.
That is exactly what happened.
That's right.
It was either one town annexed that land and get the tax money or another town to annex that land and get that tax money. Either way, the houses were going to be built. It was going to be who gets the tax money. I think we made the right decision.
And here's another thing. I'm glad you brought that up. Your decision to bring North Point in has been atrocious. And people out here having wrecks can't even get up and down the church street. When you come down Kenworthy, you can't see it to come out there. And we still have all these problems. No forethought.
I believe we had that discussion last meeting. And I believe we have received emails from Tyler of improvements we're gonna try to work on down there. And we've also had that discussion with the police chiefs.
And let the taxpayers know that you're giving them 85%. We don't get 85% back. They get 85% and tear up our streets, tear up our roads, tear up our neighborhoods. That's tremendous government. That's how big government works. We're a small town, but we have to absorb all the mess. And that's the truth. And when those trucks start coming, when people start getting hurt and you have Hobart Middle School down there, you're gonna have blood on your hands. But you need to think about it before you do it.
Is this part of your mayor comments?
No, it's not. Comment on his comment. Nobody can comment on someone's comment.
I think we go and let the council members do their comments. Then we can come back to you and you could speak whatever. But I don't think we need to sit here and listen to you comment on everybody else's comments.
Anyone else have a... You have anything, Phil?
I'd like to know if you know what you're...
Mr. Chitwood?
Yes, I do. I wanna agree with what Mr. Travis said or Mr. Smith said about these other neighbors. Also, I appreciate the citizens coming out. I would like to apologize for the way this meeting goes. Sometimes the meetings that the mayor doesn't know how to run, he doesn't run it correct. So... But we try to keep it as professional as possible, but obviously it is not gonna happen. So... But again, I appreciate y'all coming out. I wish more would come and to see what goes on in these meetings. And that way they can speak out at these public comments during the public comments so they can hear a lot more and see a lot more. I know they... I'm looking at the amount of people that's viewing right now and it's... It's like it says 55. I know there's more citizens than that that care about that. So I wish they would... And I wish they would call me. I'd be glad to talk to them. I don't look at Facebook and get into the antics of Facebook, talking back and forth. Don't do that anymore. Once was enough and I kinda grew up. But I prefer somebody to call me. If you email me, leave me your phone number, I'll be glad to call you back. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I have, I'd like to thank people for coming out. I like for people to listen online. I think it's a... I think of democracy is what it's all about. Whether you agree with me or whether I agree with you, we still have a right to our opinions. And when you see things so bad and so wrong to where we use other people like the county to come in and put us in a water line that we didn't need for the school anyway. But what it's gonna do is it's gonna ensure them to where they're gonna make plenty of money off that water line, that they're gonna have to pay twice the rate like they should. And they're not... And I don't know how... And just like you told me, had 9,000 gallons, school wasn't even in. I don't know how you do that. We gotta... See, we gotta guard against these things. We get stole from while we're sleeping. We're losing 4 million gallons of water a month. I figure 1 million, that was the city stuff because we got fire hydrants, things like that. But when you're losing 3 million gallons of water every month, that's $36 million a year. 10 years is 360 million gallons. That's why your water and stuff like that, just like the landfill fee, it's a joke. Number one, you're paying taxes to have your garbage picked up. But no one understands what the law, how the ordinance and everything came about and when the city became incorporated, what the duties were. Street lights, police protection, you know, pick up your garbage and things like that. Now, where do we get that? Listen, you add all these taxes together. How much is the water... The landfill fee each month, Tyler?
It's various.
It's not. The garbage fee, how much is it?
Oh, that's... 14, maybe, I think 12 or 14 dollars. I don't have it.
You add that to your taxes. Then you add the water runoff fee and then you add your taxes in general. See, that's... Everything could be encompassed under one thing to where it has a tax rate. And then everyone will be paying and not paying all this extra money every month to where people have five children. Can you imagine people trying to feed five children today? And we could help this problem if everyone sit down and work it out in, you know, easy, common sense way to where the tax rates should cover all that stuff and then they'll have a water and sewer rate and that's it. Why do we need a water runoff fee? Thank God the water runs off. Why do we need to keep putting more and more money? And look at how much money we have in the fund right now. What is it, 400,000, Tyler? This is water runoff fees. And then they go out and borrow 200,000. And there's not one person in this room that knows anything about business would ever borrow money when you have the money. And I wouldn't either. And you cannot borrow yourself rich. But you have to guard and protect what you have. It's called good stewardship of the money. And that's all I have. But thank y'all and thank y'all for coming to the meeting. Need a motion to adjourn, I guess.
Make a motion. We adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Thank you.